Are you all K-State fans or you just work there?
Yes, yes.
White yes.
Just curious.
Absolutely.
You ready?
Kisses of K-State, kiss.
Good evening, welcome to the August 14th regular city commission meeting. I ask that everyone either turn off their phone or silence it. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by moment of meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is old business, consideration of minutes from the July 24th and the August 7th, July 24th regular meeting, August 7th special meeting. Any questions, changes, additions, deletions from the commission? Any comments?
Yeah.
Now I'll take a motion.
And that we approve the minutes of the July 24th 2018 regular meeting and the August 7th 2018 special meeting.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the minutes as presented, begin voting for Commissioner Griswold, who is joining us via phone.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
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 Pass is five zero. Yes, I wanted to mention Commissioner Griswold is participating in the meeting via phone right there. Next item is second consideration ordinance number 8082 demolition assessments. City clerk will handle this item.
Mayor, Commissioner, this was presented to you on first consideration on July 24th and this is an ordinance to assess special assessments for five different properties that the city demolished during the past year and those will go and be assessed as special assessments on the taxes for those properties.
And did I, Mr. Kramer, did you tell us that these assessments go against, as a tax thing, that some property owners did come in and pay their...
I believe on the nuisance assessments.
Yeah, we didn't have any plans on the demolitions on this.
But we did on the nuisance, which is next.
Yeah, and I'll go with this.
Okay, sorry. Any questions?
No.
Requires roll call vote, I will call the roll. Mr. Bowder.
Aye.
Mr. Dedeky.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Griswold.
Aye.
And I vote aye, passes five zero. Next item is another roll call vote for second consideration ordinance number 8083.
This one is a special, this is a special assessment for demolition, I'm sorry, for nuisance assessments. This is mowing, lot cleanup, those types of things to properties. We did have two property owners that came in and paid. Those will be removed from attachment A, so they will not be reflected on the final ordinance.
And Ms. Williamson, these will, they'll get the county clerk's office, we approve them, we'll hit them fairly soon, they'll reflect on their tax statements in December.
Yes, we'll file those within the next couple of days and anybody, up until they actually put them on the statement or get ready to, we still will allow somebody to come in and make a payment directly to us and work with the county clerk to make sure that they don't go on the tax rolls. So there's a couple week period of time that people still can do that without going to the tax roll.
Any questions, comments? There's some of them there that have a couple thousand dollars in mowing and assessment charges. Any questions?
No.
Now I'll take, that's roll call vote again for ordinance number 8083 nuisance assessment. Begin voting for Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 Pass is five zero, thank you. New business, citizens' participation, this part of the meeting is reserved for citizens that would care to address the commission about items that are not on tonight's agenda or present petitions to the clerk. Anyone here care to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is the mosquito program discussion. Pass this to Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the city commission has heard from a few citizens over the past couple months in regards to our mosquito spray program and our mosquito larvicide program that we do, mosquito control program in general. Not being experts in the field, my office began reaching out to the state department of health and environment, state department of health, and then ultimately got to the two guests that we have here today. So I'll turn this over to Kansas State University entomologist Dr. Jeff Whitworth and Dr. Holly Davis, who are recognized as some of the foremost experts in the state on this subject. They reviewed our program and they're here to talk about that a little bit, then also talk about mosquito control in general, and then they'll be here for questions that you may have, so I'll go ahead and turn it over.
Okay. Dr. Whitworth, Dr. Davis, thank you very much for attending and whichever, either one of you, do you care to start?
Yes, actually, it's our pleasure to be here.
Welcome to weapon, by the way.
Yeah, I've been here for a long time, a long time, probably 20 plus years. It's changed a little bit, but you know, it's still a nice city, I think, so we're happy to be here. We do this a lot, go around, that's part of our job as extension specialists, trying to help folks in the state relative to insect problems or pest problems if they have some. In regards to mosquito control, it's tough, you know, and I worked when I was in college, I worked on a mosquito abatement program for four years going through college at a city county health department. And then, you know, I was in the army and then I got a PhD back in 1980, anyway, so I've worked in entomology a long time. Holly, Dr. Davis just got her PhD in...
2014.
2014, so she's a lot more up, I would say, on literature and that kind of stuff with the program. So actually, we're here to try and, if we can, answer any questions about your program. Maybe one of the things that I will tell you all and one of the things that I hear a lot is, well, you know, I Googled this or I went on the internet and it said this. And when we teach, and we do teach, we're teaching two classes this fall, I always tell the students, first thing, don't pay attention to the internet, don't go to Google, don't Google anything. If you have to, if it has an EDU after it or USDA or something like .gov or something like that, otherwise you can put anything you want, you can find anything you want, you know, on the internet or Google. So you want to make sure you go to refereed sources and that's always, you know, I get lots of people, no, not arguing exactly, but they want to disagree or they have questions about stuff because they read something on the internet. You know, you've got to just make sure it's a refereed scientific publication before you do that. So what questions do you have or what, how can we help you with your program?
Well, I think that Mr. Kramer probably gave you information about our current mosquito control program, the spraying that we do. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
And maybe you can just talk about that in general. What good does it do, what harm does it do, what are negative effects, what are neutral effects, what are positive effects?
All right, number one, I would say anytime you do a mosquito control program, it's going to be tough. First of all, you need to decide what kind of mosquitoes you have in the area and that usually comes from sampling because the different species of mosquitoes lay eggs in different kinds of habitat. So you kind of need to know what's in the area to know where you need to target your mosquito control program, especially the larvicide program. Larvicide helps a lot, but that should go along with, and I'm sure you do this, some sort of publicity program, you know, every spring after every large rain, say, okay, make sure you get rid of all the backyard standing water, poke a little hole in tires, bird baths need to be changed, you know, all that kind of stuff. We do that all the time, we put that out through K-State all the time. Make sure your eaves troughs, you know, eaves troughs get filled up, it doesn't take very long to produce mosquitoes, maybe a week, you can produce a lot of mosquitoes in a week. So just little things like that you don't always think about and every time it rains, that changes, so you've got to be on that. So that's the first two things, trying to identify what kind of mosquitoes you have in there. We have a pretty good handle on that if you just want to, you know, get with KDA or somebody, they have a pretty good handle on that. And that will tell you more where you can target your larvicide. And then start larvicide, larvicide works really well and especially if it goes hand in hand with the publicity and get people aware of the program, you know, and starting to help you with their local areas because you can't go into backyards and do that kind of stuff. So that really helps, you know, junkyards, old car, I mean, just lots of little places you wouldn't think about produce lots of mosquitoes. So that's one of the things you need to think about. I think probably, and really you don't cause any, as far as I know, and Holly will correct me if we're wrong, you really don't cause any problems larvicide with non-target organisms. You know, we talk about non-target organisms, that's not what you're targeting, that's can be, you know, a problem that you didn't intend in consequences, but as far as larvicide goes... The insecticides they use for, to kill larvae now are pretty specific. You don't have a lot of, like I said, you don't have a lot of unintended consequences. So larvicide is usually not what causes people to question the program. What usually causes it, and I've seen it over the years and we've gotten calls from a lot of different cities over the years, is the adulticide program because that's where you go down the street and you fog, you know, you put the ultra low volume and you do it this part of the city this time, you have it happen. That's usually what, you know, it kind of divides people. Some people really like it, they go, oh man, now no mosquitoes for a while, you know, they feel really, other people say, oh man, they're killing my dogs and my cat and all the birds and all that kind of stuff. So it's kind of the two-pronged attack, but really truly from an environmental standpoint, you're not causing any unintended consequences, really truly. Especially what you guys are using, you know, you're not even really putting a big dent in the adult mosquito population. You're going to kill a few mosquitoes, adult mosquitoes, the females have to have a blood meal. That's, they're built, they're adept at finding blood. They have to have a blood meal in order to incorporate into their eggs in order to have fertile eggs. So they're really good at finding blood, whether it's a bird, horse, mouse, or human, okay? So they're really good at that. So you've got to keep that in mind. They can fly, they can fly several miles to find that blood meal and they will. So when you're going along fogging, you're going through fog, that mist is going to be in the area for a little while, but there's not going to be any residual, there's not going to be any carryover for very long. So any of those mosquitoes that happen to be flying at that time, if that mist gets on them, it will probably kill them. That's it. Then mosquitoes come in, you know, an hour later or the next morning, it's not, it's not going to bother them, there's no residual activity. If it doesn't kill them when it gets on them, it's not going to. So it does reduce populations, we used to run traps before and after just to make sure we had some statistical data and you will reduce the population for an hour or two, but not in the long run. So, but if it makes you feel good and it doesn't cost that much, I see no reason not to do it because it does remove a few adult mosquitoes, right? It does not affect anything else unless it happens to get right on them. And when you spray in the evenings, especially in the evenings, there aren't any pollinators out there, that's what people are usually worried about. The pollinators are out there in the day for the most part. And there's no residual effect on the foliage anyway, so, you know, I mean, and mosquitoes are what, 100 times more...
Correct. Sensitive.
More sensitive to the spray, that's why you can kill them with such a low volume when you don't kill bees or wasps or any of the other, or moths or any pollinators, okay? And if there's no flowers pollinating in that area, there aren't going to be any pollinators there anyway. I mean, it's just, you know, that's one of the things I get called all the time, when you spray alfalfa fields, you're killing all the pollinators out there in the alfalfa because if you look out in the alfalfa field, there's butterflies, there's all kinds of stuff, but they don't spray it when it's flowering, they cut it before it flowers. So the pollinators aren't there. So we don't have a big problem with spraying crops because of pollinators. They're only out there when there's flowers, when there's pollen, that's why they're called pollinators, right? So, you know, I guess if, as far as a scientific review of your program, it's fine, you're not, I don't see any unintended consequences, no secondary problems done, you know, to non-target organisms, but as far as whether it's actually reducing mosquito population, the adult program, larvicide is, that's helpful, but as far as the adulticide, if you do it, if it makes some people feel good, you can afford it, doesn't cost you anything, I say go for it, you know? It's just like, why not? Because you will kill a few, you may give some people relief for a couple of hours if they want to go outside. It's not going to hurt them, doesn't hurt people, so.
And did I hear you correctly that the pollinators, which might be bees, butterflies, et cetera, this, what we're using is not detrimental to them on a large scale?
Well, it's...
You can run over with the truck, but...
We had a handout.
Yeah, so we have a handout that we brought to talks a little bit. The chemical that you guys are using is a permethrin.
I'm sorry, it's a what?
It's a permethrin and it's, it's an insecticide. Well, but some, these places you may be familiar with it, it's used in a lot of the spot treatments used for, you put on your animals, your pets. They even sell clothing that is impregnated with permethrin for mosquito, you know, when you're out hiking and things like that. So it is relatively safe insecticide to humans. It is toxic to all insects, however, like Jeff mentioned, mosquitoes are 100 times more sensitive to permethrin than bees. So the, there's been some studies done where they've actually exposed bees and mosquitoes and, you know, a field setting and experiments and I included some of that data in the handout. And the amount that kills all the mosquitoes had absolutely no impact on the bees. So in large doses, yes, it will, it will kill pollinators, but in the doses, the amounts that you guys are using in your programs, it's not. Now, if it were sprayed and a bee flew right through that mist, yes, it would probably have a negative impact, but like we have talked about, just when you're spraying, the pollinators are not going to be present and that chemical is not going to remain in the environment to a degree that it's going to impact a bee that comes through two, three hours later.
But if it's not especially effective, excuse me, I just spoke up there, if it's not especially effective, what is the point of even doing it? I mean, is it, how expensive is it to do our spraying program every year? How much are we spending on that?
I think Dr. Whitworth hit on the what is effective, I think, you know, and I won't speak for him, but it does kill a few adult ones and then there's some, there's some people who do feel better about it.
Feeling better about it isn't...
Right, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about the benefits.
We need to have the facts, you know, is it, is it worthwhile to even do it?
Right.
I mean, in neighborhoods, I mean, I understand, before a big event, down by the river, before a big event or something like that, I could see that, but I wonder about, you know, regular spraying in the neighborhoods.
What about some of the plants, for example? I know my wife collects or has milkweed for monarch butterflies and she has a little butterfly thing inside the house that she's in there. I've got six chrysalises in the house right now from milkweed. Does this spray, is sprayed on the milkweed, does it kill the milkweed, have any effect on it?
No.
No. So, and we've all heard, and once again, I don't know there's a peer reviewed study, but I think it's probably fairly accurate there, in discussion about number of bees in the US in agriculture that have declined over the years. Is it as a result of this or is it a whole nother issue?
No, and as a matter of fact, the bees in Kansas have not declined.
Okay.
Matter of fact, we've had a study for the last few years by a graduate student just in Kansas and, you know, it's called, was it colony collapse disease? They don't really know what causes the decline in bees, maybe a combination of things, but we've not seen that in Kansas. You know, you may see a beekeeper here have some colonies go down because of mites or something else, but we've not seen it in Kansas. So no, it doesn't, it doesn't. Permethrin is an extract from a plant, it's a biological pesticide, biological insecticide, it really doesn't affect other plants. I don't think it affects monarch butterflies, so I...
You know, one of the reasons besides making, quote, people feel good about it and obviously have some effect, but you know, things like encephalitis or West Nile virus or what are some other mosquito borne diseases, I think that have occurred in Kansas, not in a great number, but I believe there's been, what, 15 deaths in the last four or five years from West Nile? And probably, obviously, if it hasn't been that many deaths, there's probably been, I would just guess, maybe quite a few number of illnesses and some people probably don't react at all, but what can you tell us about those mosquito borne diseases?
Well, the Zika virus, we don't have it yet, or at least we have, we'll probably get it eventually. St. Louis encephalitis, that's one that can, people can get, horses get it. That hasn't been a real big problem lately, probably the biggest problem is West Nile virus. We've had that in the state, I got that the first year it was here and everybody said it was appropriate.
You suffer from it?
I did, yes. It was no fun.
Is it bad flu or worse?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so West Nile virus is probably, not probably, probably the virus they're most worried about as far as mosquito borne. And larvicide will help, you know, adulticide, like to answer your question, they, it does reduce populations temporarily, maybe for an hour or two, if the mosquitoes are flying and they get into those droplets while they're still wet. But that's it. So the main thing to protect against mosquito borne diseases, if you don't go outside during the time the mosquitoes are active, you know, that's just what we tell everybody, or wear an insect repellent with DEET in it, D-E-E-T.
Right.
That's still the most effective, still the best. You can go online and find citronella and all these other products, they are actually repellents, but they don't repel as well or as long as DEET. You know, if you get something with DEET, 30% DEET, refresh yourself with that because you can wear it off or, you know, sweat it off or something, but those are the main ways to protect yourself from mosquito borne diseases. Now, mosquitoes in Kansas, there's not that many of them that actually, you know, have the disease or infected with the virus, but that's pretty much it, just don't go out when they're out. Wear insect repellent, they can even bite through long sleeves, but larvicide, I mean, larvicide helps, the publicity helps, make sure you know or tell everybody every time it rains, hey, get rid of all that backwater, standing, that backyard standing water and think about it, just think about eaves troughs, you know, old tires, anything.
Today would be a good day for that.
Yes, or next week, because, you know, it only takes, at these temperatures, it only takes about a week. Those eggs they had, some of the eggs are already there just waiting for the moisture and then the larvae come out and the pupae and the adults and they're looking for a blood meal. Doesn't take very long, so.
You mentioned spraying in the evening, I think we tend to spray in the morning between...
We just made the shift, I believe, this year to the morning.
And what, from sunrise till eight, nine, 10 o'clock, whatever it might be?
Early in the morning.
Would you recommend, if we would continue this, would you say morning's not as effective as evening or...
No, I would say they're both about the same.
Okay, okay.
Whenever the mosquitoes, the adult mosquitoes are active, as far as the adulticide goes.
And they're just as active in the morning as they are in the evening?
Yes, just as the sun comes up or just, you know, before it gets dark. Now, they can be active after dark also, but the majority of them are just sun up and sun down.
Do you guys use this program in your city?
Yes.
Is it effective?
Just what I told you. Larvicide is really effective, making sure you get everybody involved, getting rid of all the backyard standing water, that's really effective.
Do you spray in your city? Do you spray in Manhattan? You live, both of you live in Manhattan?
Actually, we live in Abilene now, but adulticide, yes, Manhattan, Slyna, Abilene, yes.
So you have the truck going down the street, fog, you know, like...
Yes, they notify ahead of time and yes, they go down the street. And they're, actually, the fog is safe, you know, you always hear people say, oh, I got in the fog, oh, well, you know, it's, it's...
And you've looked at our concentrations and you feel that what we're spraying is...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you guys are right on target with, you know, everything looks fine, safe and very reasonable.
Any other questions?
Where are we using the larvicide at, in the creeks and so forth or...
This is Mr. McDonald, these are Director of Public Works.
Thank you. The larvicide program is relatively limited to areas that we know we have had standing water problems in the past, it is not all encompassing, it tends to be inlets or catch basins that are holding water, creeks that don't flow regularly that are on the city property that we have access to. And I believe we use like a weighted donut of material and they chuck them into the facilities a couple, three times over the course of the summer. It is by no means comprehensive, but it is, been fairly consistent for the last several years.
Any other questions from the commission?
You know, there's various materials you can use for larvicide and they're all, they're all pretty safe, they all work pretty well.
Mr. Kramer? Commissioner Griswold, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. What is the time period in which we do the spraying, from which month to which month? That's my first question.
Do you know, Mr. Kramer or Mr. McDonald?
It's somewhat driven by weather and personal observation when we start.
It's usually like May through September or would you, if you had to use a general...
I'd say that's a, that's a fair summary.
May through September is a rough, rough timeframe. Commissioner Griswold?
Do we know the approximate cost of our program, of the spraying slash fogging program?
If you're talking about just the chemicals or if you're then talking about, we do training, we have equipment, we have staff time, that would be more difficult to, you'd have to do, you'd have to come up with a summary of hours, number of employees, the training costs, the fuel to drive that, so that's a more complex calculation that we can come up with, but we haven't at this point.
What about materials?
I'd like to see that too.
Mike, I believe it's $500 a barrel.
And how long does a barrel last?
It could go through, what, four to six barrels a year?
Four barrels per year. So $2,000 worth of insecticide?
Right.
Not including labor and is it public works or is it Parks and Rec who drive the trucks?
Public works.
Public works, yes. And during this time of year, are they out daily, they out...
They go through the city on our grid system and they rotate through them. Basically, every day that the weather is permitting, there's a loss of wind speed. If it's over, over too fast, they will not go out. We do have, there are four weather stations, one in each quarter of the city that they check the wind speed on to make sure it's not too high and they will go out generally most mornings that it's available, wind speed and weather wise, and work our way through our pattern.
The truck operator, the sprayer, if he or she is not spraying for mosquitoes, what would they, if they're not spraying tomorrow, what would he or she be doing in public works? Duties is assigned, but what are you taking them off if you do this or...
There's, I believe they do just a scheduled shift and they would say come in two or three hours early and they would leave two or three hours early, but if they're not doing mosquito spraying, there's everything from crack sealing to bottles, variety of routine street insectives.
Okay.
But they don't do it all day, they just do it in those morning hours and then go back out to the field to do, to do it.
Commissioner Griswold, did that answer that question?
Yes, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I guess it's for the PhDs, the two PhDs, and thank you for coming to our meeting this evening, but do you know generally, I mean, in terms of your explanation of the effectiveness, I guess the effects are pretty, pretty quick and pretty residual from what I, if I heard you correctly, but, I mean, do you know, you mentioned some cities that do the spraying, but over, across Kansas, do we know whether it's 50% of the cities or is that statistic not known?
This is Jeff Whitworth. First of all, it's not residual, there is very little residual activity involved with the adulticide. Larvicides will last a little bit longer, but no, I'm not taking, we've not taken a census or a poll to see how many cities do it. I know Manhattan, Abilene and Slyna do, Wichita does on occasion, so I think there's, I think it's more... I think it's more prevalent around the state than we realize. I'm not sure they publicize it a lot, but a lot of cities do engage in it, you know, and I had a guy that worked for the Health Department, I won't say his name, and he said, you know, we do it, we've not had West Nile virus in our city, and as soon as we quit and somebody gets it, we're going to be in trouble. So, that's what I'm saying, when if it makes you feel good and you can afford it, it's probably not a bad idea, just from a public relations standpoint, but you're not hurting anything by watching.
And the larvicide does not affect, larvicide does not affect the birds or the other animals or insects?
No, not what you're using.
Okay.
When I started, we used DDT.
Yeah.
That affected everything. Probably still is.
I just wondered if, if we spent less on spraying, we could actually afford to put out larvicide for people, you know?
Well, how much do we spend on larvicide, Mr. McDonald?
I do not, I do not.
I mean, how much does a donut cost?
I suppose it's probably a few hundred dollars a year.
For everything.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission?
My feeling is, it sounds like we're spending somewhere between five to eight thousand dollars a year to help reduce this mosquito population, and I'm all in favor of continuing it. I think it is, is ridding some. We're not going to get them all, but once this information gets out and people feel more assured, because I remember the DDT and the petroleum base, and they did do damage, but with what we're using now, you know, basically, less than ten percent damage, I believe, I would encourage to keep it.
And all, Dr. Whitworth and Dr. Davis, the studies that you've referenced and that you're involved in, those are all peer-reviewed, aren't they?
Yeah, we don't use Google and Internet.
Okay, but they're peer-reviewed, so, separate question, and is there any other questions on the mosquitoes right now from the Commission?
No.
I have a question, if possible, you can answer, and I know many people in Leavenworth are troubled by the number of moles in this town this year. I don't know if you have, if you have any expertise in that, but they seem to be much worse over the last two years.
We have to get rid of the white grubs.
But you can't use Diazanone anymore?
They're feeding on white grubs. There's several products, and I can't use a, you know, specific name of a product, there's several products registered labeled with the white grub control. The problem is, if you use a granular material, which most of the lawn and garden products are, make sure you water it in. About the grubs, when it's hot, grub worms go down deeper in the soil to escape the hot and the dryness. When it's wet, they'll come back up a little bit. So, what you have to do is, you spray, or you put out the granules on your yard, you need to put enough water in to get it down into that zone where those grubs are, else they'll kill. They're all contact insecticides. Insecticide's not translocated by the plant, so it has to contact the grubs, so get rid of the grubs, or get rid of the moles.
So, they don't eat just earthworms, grubs are their primary...
Right.
You need a dog that kills moles.
But the moles keep coming back, thank you.
I have a cat that kills moles, so I don't have any problem.
So, your recommendation, the grub control is the best way of doing it, is correct?
Yes. Yeah, well, yeah, if people just want to go out and trap moles, that kind of fun, you know?
Any other questions, Commission? Well, we want to thank you very much for coming here, coming here from Manhattan, and our, from Abilene, I'm sorry, but Representative Kay State, we represent Kay State very well, and thank you for your time. Any other questions of us?
No, we're fine. If you guys go, we're here to answer your questions about bugs. Seriously, I don't think you're going to cause any problems from a biological standpoint, or, you know, doing what you're doing, so, it's up to you, if you want to continue. If you have any questions, Paul knows where to get a hold of us, or how to get a hold of us, we're more happy to try and answer the questions to him. I don't like the term expert, but we'll try and help.
Dr. Davis, do you have anything to say?
I don't think so, no, thank you for having us.
Well, thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, our pleasure, so, we're out of here.
Okay, thank you. There's no action on that, I am sure that we'll, do we want to further discuss this? Do we want to put it on a study session, or?
I want to get the cost, I want to find out what the costs are that we're dealing with.
We can get you a further breakdown, I believe Commissioner Dedek is probably pretty close, we'll figure out some personnel stuff, the chemical costs, I think, are about two thousand dollars annually, but we can, we can pull out a little more detail on, you know, some labor costs, but that five to eight thousand is probably, probably closer to five, I would think, but it's pretty accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Mike.
Yeah.
Well, I think having a short study session, I think that's what I heard would be a good idea. I mean, we've got one, about a month left, or maybe month and a half left for this program, so what we would be looking at would be what we would do, and if we want to make any modifications for 2019, at least that's the way I see it, so.
Yeah, I agree. Let's, I think, let's let Mr. Kramer give us a cost breakdown, materials, et cetera, and then we'll get something scheduled on a study session, wait to have the information from you, so, then we can put something on a study session, so have a spreadsheet or something to look at. Is that fair?
Sounds good to me, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the public hearing for the 2019 budget. First action is to open the public hearing, or do you have any, do you need to process it with any management?
No, go ahead and open the public hearing.
Need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, to open public hearing for the 2019 budget. Begin voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Pass is five zero, we're now on a public hearing for the 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, staff, my office, Finance Office, City Clerk's Office, Assistant City Manager's Office have had no comments since the budget presentation and the Commission review during our budget hearing. Just reiterate the fact that this is a no-millage-increase budget for city-funded operations. The only increase was for the Library Employee Benefits Fund, a small millage increase on that, but for all city-funded activities, there is no millage increase going forward. There are a number of enhancements for community appearance that we added during the budget hearings, and staff has no comments at this time. If there are any questions, we'll do our best to answer those.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Since the public hearing, any questions, comments from the public? Anyone care to address the Commissioner about the 2019 budget? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the Commissioners?
No, I think we, I covered, I mean, I understood pretty well everything during the other presentations, so I'm good.
Mr. Griswold, any comments?
No, I mean, the document that's in there was maybe a little bit of an expansion of what we had gotten, or maybe it's the same document that we had before we had our meetings in early to mid-July, and I do think we went over the, anything that was, that we needed to with respect to, you know, mill levy, any, any, any other particular aspect of it. It's summarized in this document, and it's consistent with what we were presented and what we discussed in July, so no, I don't have any further comments.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, sir.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing. Begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pass is five zero, we're going to close the public hearing, and now we need a motion to adopt the 2019 budget as presented.
I move to adopt the 2019 budget as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the 2019 budget as presented. Begin voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pass is five zero, thank you. Next item is the Housing Budget, Planners Two Budget, which is Resolution B-2204. Mr. Kramer, or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commission, this is just that we have to have a separate resolution to send to the Housing and Urban Development Department, related to Planners Two, again, no changes, no comments from the presentation during the budget hearings.
Questions or comments from the Commission? Now, take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the Housing Budget as presented.
Second.
A motion, second, to approve or adopt the Housing Budget for Planners Two, Resolution B-2204. Begin voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Pass is five zero, thank you. Next item is the annual approval of the Edward Byrne Grant, police, uh, not Police Grant, it's Edward Byrne Grant.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, the Police Department is requesting authority to apply for the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Jag Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. On July the twenty-third of 2018, the Department of Justice released the annual allocations, local solicitation, identified the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, as eligible for the twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollar amount. It's the annual grant that we use to acquire police equipment for our overall mission. The grant application specifically requires the City of Leavenworth to share this allocation with Leavenworth County, as they are categorized in the disparate group. The allocation, based upon a formula which provides, the City of Leavenworth will receive fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, and the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department will receive ten thousand dollars. The City of Leavenworth must apply for the grant on behalf of both entities. I've had communication with Sheriff Dedek, and he is acceptable to this grant application and the allocation. They intend to use it as well for law enforcement purposes. They've added a couple of procedural changes this year. It would, the action tonight would be to authorize the Police Department to apply for the grant. We would split the allocation, the total grant is twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. We would receive fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy, and the Sheriff's Department would receive ten thousand dollars, and it requires us, requires us to enter into an interlocal agreement. It also added further that the mayor is required to sign an additional document entitled Certifications and Assurances by the Chief Executive of the Appointed Government, and that's the new provision this year. So, if you don't have any questions, that would be what I would ask you for this evening.
Chief, I, did I see, did I hear, did I read, did the Board of County Commissioners, did they discuss this item? Did they have to vote on it? I know you say, we're the approval authority, but wasn't it a discussion point during a Board of County Commissioners meeting?
It is traditional that the Sheriff's Department goes to the Board of County Commissioners and asks for them to enter into the interlocal agreement. I'm sure that's probably what they discussed.
Okay, fine.
And the Sheriff has assured me, or Major Shirley, who went, took care of that action sometime in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, so, and we don't have to necessarily get to buy it, not that they'd be against it, but they don't have, they don't have any actions, all our action, then we split the monies?
Correct. It's the, I think principally, that action is the agreement to split the money.
Okay, okay, okay. Any questions for the chief? If not, we'll take a motion.
I move we authorize the Police Department to apply for the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, of which ten thousand will be given to the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
A motion, second, to approve the Edward Byrne Grant as presented. Begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Pass is five zero, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next item, bids, contracts, and agreements, consider proposals for the replacement of Cody Park playground equipment.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, our Parks Superintendent, Brian Bailey, is going to take the lead on this, and we also have representatives of the company, Jay Oliver Construction, here tonight, to tell you about the project, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I want to thank you for letting us present this to you tonight. I'd also like to thank our Parks Community Activity Board Advisory for coming, supporting us tonight. Kara McGanell, Shelley Cannon, Jim Mathis, and John Richley, they are behind us here.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
I bring in for, for you tonight, the Cody Park Replacement Playground. The playground is a composite structure playground that was installed in 1999. In the most recent years, parts have been discontinued and hard to come by, and the manufacturer just doesn't provide the parts anymore for this playground. Staff has, over the years, had to start to remove some of the components of the playground, because we can't get them anymore, and we can't fix it. The playground is now to the condition where it has to be replaced or removed, and so staff has come up with some guidelines, and we asked for proposals that were received with the purpose of having sturdiness, resistance to vandalism, time constraints, appearance and play, play about, playability, sorry, playability. We also gave the vendors a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollar budget to work within, and not to exceed. On August first, bids, or, on August first, 2018, the submits proposed were opened. Four firms submitted proposals, one with more than one option. One of the options from that firm was disqualified, because it did not meet the recommended requirements. The four firms were Cunningham and Associates with Game Time, AV Creative with Burke, Frye Associates with Play World, and Jay Oliver Construction with Henderson Playground. The Parks and Community Activities Advisory Board reviewed and discussed these proposals at our August sixth meeting. Based on playability, sturdiness, design, and appearance, the board recommends the proposal from Jay Oliver Construction LLC for the purchase of this, for the purchase and installation of the Henderson Playground equipment for Cody Park at a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred. There is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred allocated in the capital improvement budget for 2018, and it is our recommendation for the Henderson Playground from Jay Oliver Construction. Do you have any questions?
What question?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dedek.
I'm sorry. What kind of condition is the current equipment, what's your plans to do with it?
The current condition of the playground right now is bad shape. We're wanting to remove that playground, the metal and stuff will be scrapped, recycled, the plastics and so forth, if we can recycle them with will. And then there's a few components that will be used, for instance, the tube slide, we had to replace parts of that, that is going to be installed in our dog park for the dogs.
Okay, good. Mr. Bailey, this is, I don't know what it'd be called, it's not a necessary reverse bid process, that is, we said, took it out, to those companies, said we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand and change, what can you bring us for the hundred and twenty-five thousand? As opposed to, we didn't write specs, because, you know, there's no way you could spec it. And so, then your board, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, looked at all the options that people presented, and they're choosing this one, these people have studied very closely. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, that's fairly fair. So, we wrote requirements that they had to meet, for instance, they had to meet twenty play features, at least, a minimum of twenty play features, and they had to do replacements of other pieces of concrete for the border around the playground, so forth, and Jay Oliver Construction met all those criteria and went beyond.
Okay. Mr. Mathis, Coach, are you still the chairman of the board?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. You need some TV time.
Okay.
Tell us the process that you and your board went through to evaluate all of this, and convince us this, you think this is the best bang for a buck.
Yes. Okay, we had our meeting August sixth instead of yesterday, we usually meet the first Monday of every, second Monday.
Okay.
So, we moved up, and we wanted to, a half hour early to the meeting a week ago, and a number of us did, and Steve did an excellent job, and Brian also, explaining the different features, and we had five different companies, I believe, we looked at. And we finally decided that maybe, we spent an hour after the meeting started, and we decided to vote on two, and we got down to two, and then we re, looked at it, compared the two individually, and this is the one that we thought was the best, and I think we were voting unanimously on this particular project. Steve went down, he told about going down to Lake of South with a Henry, the easy Oliver Program, or Henderson is the name of it. He visited there and looked over it, and he found it to be a very... He visited there and looked over it and he found it to be a very good product.
So your board, which, how many members are there on board? Nine?
If everybody was there. If everybody was there.
Yeah, but you, yeah, which were you?
We had six or seven, eight last, last meeting.
And they're all in agreement that this is.
Uh-huh. And we thought this was the best way and we believe that playgrounds are important to our city of Leavenworth and that is probably the most used part for playgrounds in the city. You drive your car by there and people are using it all the time.
But I just, uh, that's why we've appointed nine members of the community on Parks and Rec Board. I know that your board meets often and takes up a lot of issues and I'm glad that you dug deep in the weeds on this and this is your recommendation. I feel very good about it. If you, if your board has recommended it, I feel strong about it.
We have a couple of other members here and I think.
Oh yeah, Mr. Richly, who else we have here? And who is represented as from Jay Oliver?
This is Jason and Lindsay.
Okay. If we do approve this, you can come up. What's your name, sir?
Jason.
Jason Oliver?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, where are you from?
Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay. Uh, if we do approve this, how long will it take to tear out? Are you going to tear out that stuff or are you?
The city is doing the demolition.
So tear out.
Yep, so the city's going to tear out the existing playground that's there now. Um, we have a sixty day from the time we get the playground ordered to have it installed. Um, so the timeline we're looking at is the fourth of September to about November first to have this teared out and replaced and, and reopened.
Mr. Oliver, can you meet those dates?
If we can, if we get approval this week and color selections, I think we can beat that date.
And the kids will be back in school, so.
Yeah, they're back.
And that was one of the main reasons of waiting until after school started. How, how old is our current equipment? Twenty years, did you say?
Yeah, it was built in ninety-nine.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that sounds about the age. You think this equipment will last at least twenty years?
It has a lifetime warranty on most of the components from Henderson, so if it doesn't last, we'll replace it free.
There's lifetime.
There is a standard amongst playground companies for their warranties and Henderson reaches above the standard for their warranties.
I'm sure there's somebody, Consumer Products Safety Commission rules, regulations on, on this type of equipment. Any questions for Mr. Mathis? Go ahead, Coach.
I'll just make one other comment there. One reason we kind of selected Oliver, they were close by too. I mean, some of them are not near Kansas City area, so that may be, that little bit of time.
How long have you been in business, Mr. Oliver?
Uh, it'd be my eleventh year now.
And you've done, you do a lot of playgrounds type?
I've been building playgrounds for over a decade. I started when I was twenty-one on Fort Riley Building out there and started my own company when I was twenty-four.
Do you have kids?
I have three of them.
You have a playground in your backyard?
Not a commercial one.
And this is, this quality stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Not only for play value, but as well as maintenance and longevity. Uh, I've installed probably every manufacturer that's out there and Henderson is the best.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what's your benefit?
No, I don't have either.
This is for Brian. I know you probably don't remember exactly, but we had four bidders on this with all the specifications. How many other ones of the other remaining three came close to the one twenty-four?
As far as price, they were all within a few thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Quick question. Uh, for Mr. Steve, quick question. Were there any future plans for new playground equipment in the South Side Park?
We, we discussed putting in a composite type structure at South Side. We have the, two of our composite structures at Stubby Park and Bob Doherty Park are, are in the same condition that Cody is in. Where we've gotten to the point where, where unable, they're, they're built basically right about the same time. They're all about twenty, twenty-one years old. So we've gotten to the point on those where now all of a sudden parts become obsolete. Uh, so our, our focus will be on those two composite structures next. But staff, as we have discussed, South Side Park, which as you know, if you've been there, just has, it has a few different pieces, but it's not a composite structure like these others. So we would absolutely like to do that in the future. It'd be a great location for it.
Commissioner Griswold, any comments or questions?
Yes, the main question that I have, does this, um, this bid and this work in terms of the, and putting in new playground equipment for Cody Park, include the replacement of the surface that's out there underneath the playground equipment?
Correct, yes. It also replaces the drainage that goes underneath the surface to pull the moisture away from the components.
Did you hear that question, Griswold?
It will be a new surface?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question? Go ahead.
Can, can, can you, can you just describe, what's that, the surface? Is it, will it be similar or what's, what's there now? Obviously, you know, that was twenty years ago, but what, what's it going to be like?
Yes, the surface would be certified engineered wood fiber, which is the same stuff that is there. Um, but that stuff that is at Cody right now is like you said, twenty years old. Um, we do add to it and refresh, refresh it. But, you know, wood deteriorates over time too. Uh, it is much cheaper and more cost effective for the city to keep doing the engineered wood fiber. The important place is very nice, but is, has a very high price tag on it.
Is this similar to the equipment that's at Warren Middle School now? Is that Henderson product? And I know that's not.
I don't know.
I don't know if you've built that or not.
No.
It's just those colors and those different things kind of look.
I don't, I don't believe that's Henderson. And one thing we've seen at, at Warren Middle School and other playgrounds, you see a lot of.
Not at Warren, no, I mean Henry Leavenworth. I meant Henry Leavenworth.
Oh, okay. That I'm not sure. I haven't seen that.
Okay.
I know a lot of, you see a lot of ropes being put in and a lot of playground equipment. And recently we, that was kind of one of the things we did not want put in this one. Um, we've had some bad experiences with, with ropes and, and replacement when they're just a year or two out of warranty at a, at a very high replacement cost. And I've seen that at some, you see that a lot at schools because it challenges the kids and that's what you want to do with playground equipment. That's our experience with that.
Commissioner Griswold, you have something else?
I just, it's, so is it, I mean, if a child was to fall from the playground equipment, is it, I mean, is it, is that surface hard, soft, somewhere in between? I'm just trying to get a feel for.
Yeah, no, it, it meets all the CPSI standards for fall heights and everything. You see it across the country. It's a pretty standard surfacing. And there are requirements that have to be met with that. Uh, and the, the engineered wood fiber is tested and certified.
It's actually better than the unitary surfacing.
In what type?
Than the unitary surfacing, your turf or your pouring place or rubber tiles. It has a higher fall height than all of those unitary surfacing.
More than the top of tires.
Right. For instance, like this, the material that's at David Brewer Park.
Good Porter Park, yeah.
And Woolman.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
Yeah, okay.
What kind of depth do you put at that?
So that will be all of twelve inches. It could be in places deeper than that too.
Wow.
Any other questions from Mr. Oliver, Coach Mathis, Mr. Bailey, or Mr. Grant?
And I, I just wanted to add that we still plan on doing a community event centered around the opening of this. We'll probably wait about thirty days in and see how they're doing. We don't want to schedule something before it's ready and we don't want it to get too cold, but we think the end of October will still be nice.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll get information about that and we'll get a little bit closer to the date.
Look forward to it. I know that park does get a lot of use. Okay, thank you. So if there are no other questions, I need a motion to accept a proposal from Jay Oliver for his playground equipment.
I move that we should accept a proposal from Jay Oliver Construction for the purchase and installation of the Henderson Playground equipment for Cody Park in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Motion is second to approve Jay Oliver contract to put in the Henderson Playground equipment as presented. Begin voting from Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Oliver, for being here. Thanks, Coach.
Okay, I think this is a good improvement for Leavenworth.
Okay. Well, hey, we'll do that on the slide first time. Thanks, other members of the Parks and Rec Board for being here. Uh, next item is considered the bids for the HVAC, the Performing Arts Center HVAC Phase Three.
Steve Grant, our Parks Director, will handle this item.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the third and final phase of our Performing Arts Center HVAC upgrade. Uh, just that you'll recall, Phase One in two thousand and sixteen, we were able to update the electrical service, which had the original electrical service in the facility. Uh, we also installed the digital control system device that, that controls the, the heating and cooling. And then we, we upgraded the cooling system that year regarding, we replaced one compressor and rebuilt the other compressor at that time because that compressor was only like five or six years old. Uh, we had the general contractor in two thousand and sixteen on that was Di Augustino. They did a fantastic job and the cooling system has been working great. Uh, Phase Two in two thousand and seventeen, we turned our attention to the boiler, the heating system. Uh, BCI Mechanical was the general contractor on that. Uh, we were able to get the boilers replaced and also get heat to the front of, of the building. Uh, if anybody's ever been in the Performing Arts Center, the foyer area there, I had no heat, it has a separate unit that goes to the front of there. All of that is ran off of the same digital control system, which we are now able, myself and, and Brian Bailey are able to access remotely from our computers. Uh, if there's ever an issue, we can go in and see. This third and final phase is, is what, it's now just addressing some of the issues with the air handling system, the air return tunnel that runs underneath the entire auditorium. Uh, we were adding exhaust systems into the building that aren't there. So there's some areas like that that don't meet code now because they don't have exhaust systems in some of the restrooms and things like that. So we are taking care of those items. Uh, the fresh air intake, um, down in the, in the droves in the basement, we want to put that on an automated system as well. Uh, currently has louvers that's, that allow really cold air in in the wintertime. Um, and so that's, that's an issue that we will be addressing. And then also the, um, we're be installing a heating and cooling split air system to the office that is on the southeast corner of that building. It currently has no fresh air control to it. So, uh, we developed a big package. We received two, two bids, one from BCI Mechanical in the amount of fifty-eight thousand and four dollars and a second bid from PM Contracting for forty-six thousand two hundred. Uh, we have used PM Contracting in the past. They did the, the HVAC on the, uh, community center pool. So they did a great job on that. Throughout this entire process, all three phases, we've had the same design engineer, Greg, Greg Gladfelter. He's done a great job, um, working with us throughout the project. He's comfortable with PM Contracting. So with that, staff recommends the bid from PM Contracting in the amount not to exceed forty-six thousand two hundred dollars for this third and final phase for the Performing Arts Center. With that, if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Grant?
No.
Uh, now I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept the bid from PM Contracting in the amount not to exceed forty-six thousand two hundred for the, um, Performing Arts Center HVAC Phase Three.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the bid from PM Contracting as presented. Begin voting from Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is sole source contract for City Hall HVAC system upgrade and repair.
Uh, this will be Mike McDonald, our public works director, and I believe we also have our chief building inspector, Howard At, here too.
Ask, come up, have a seat because if there's some detailed question you have, he knows way more about it than I do. Uh, this is related to the HVAC system here at City Hall. Uh, the system, uh, the main components, the boilers and the air conditioner and the way they work were changed out in the remodeling project between two thousand and three, two thousand and five. A key component to that is there's a heat exchanger that works essentially with the, with the air conditioning system. Uh, it cools, it cools the water and they exchange heat through the heat exchanger system and that's circulated throughout the building. Uh, the building is also designed to automatically shift between degrees of heating and degrees of cooling with the digital control, similar to what was talked about at the Performing Arts Center. Uh, we, the product, that means that the basic system is fifteen years old now, not counting some of the really old parts that we didn't get to. Uh, we've had a problem with the heat exchanger in the basement a number of years ago. Uh, that was replaced with a, with a replacement heat exchanger, uh, under, under warranty. Uh, the replacement heat exchanger has since failed and the question is, uh, what do we, what do we do next? And, uh, talking with the contractor that installed the original system and we contacted to install the replacement system is, uh, they believe the failure is related to some design components of the, of the system. Uh, probably it worked for many, many years and discussions with other engineers are that the failure probably is not related to those components, but they could be seen as a contributing factor. So rather than argue about it further, uh, the building is essentially now where you can have it be heated or you can have it be cooled and it's not easily changed between one and the other. Uh, reminds me of a child growing up in a army environment where the housing heat was on, on a date and it was off on another date and it made no difference what the outside temperatures were.
Right.
And we're sort of in that environment. Uh, the proposal this evening is to repair the system with some of the components that were identified as possibly making a difference with a new heat exchanger with an extended warranty for a five-year period. And it's proposed that it basically be funded with money that the city commission had set aside to do other work on the HVAC system, which was re-insulating some of the older pipes that remain in the basement. They've collected some moisture and the, from condensation and the air and the insulation is, uh, is failing and needs, they need to be re-insulated and some combustion air dampers related to the boiler operation. Uh, there was CIP money budget for thirty-two thousand dollars for that. Uh, the staff recommendation is to, if we can convert those CIP dollars to this heat exchanger repair and take care of a couple of other longstanding issues that Powell has identified. Uh, some valves, additional valves that would facilitate maintenance in the future that the balance could come from CIP contingency for the thirty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Any questions for Mr. McDonald?
I, I just wanted to comment. We, we talked a lot about, um, the original contractor had fixed it on warranty and then when it broke again. Um, and we evaluated the case for any kind of legal action related to the failure and there were so many other potential contributing factors. Um, once you get into that, um, with some of the other engineers we spoke with, you probably couldn't make a compelling case that it was a hundred percent caused by, um, the previous contractor because there are so many different components. Um, so that's the, why we elected to go this route. It's something that's timely, something that we need to get done now, something that there's funding available for. And at the end of the day, something that you would end up spending legal fees and time and resources for not a favorable outcome. So I just wanted to let the commission know that we, we seriously evaluated, um, our, our chance of submitting some sort of claim and don't believe that we would have been successful, um, ultimately with this. We've had good luck with Di Augustino. Um, and a lot of what we're cleaning up now were issues that could have contributed to the original failure. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. McDonald or Mr. Kramer? Now I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the sole source bid from Di Augustino Mechanical in the amount of not to exceed thirty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars to include a five-year parks warranty.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bid Di Augustino to the City Hall HVAC. Again, voting from Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you. Next item, consider bids for WPC Canada axle dump truck.
Mr. McDonald will continue and we also have our wastewater superintendent Chuck Staples here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a scheduled replacement of the dump trucks that are used at the wastewater plant, all slugged to the landfill.
at the wastewater plant, hauls slugs to the landfill. We have two trucks. They are each 2005 models that have over 200,000 miles on them. The replacement vehicles will be similar size and shape. Having learned from experience, we've made sure we have the axle, rear and axle ratios for the type of travel that we do and that we've specified a dump bed that is, will last the length that we expect it needs to. 15 to 20 years would not be unreasonable to have the new trucks in service. We've worked with the finance director and the finance office to pursue one of these joint purchasing agreements, identified two vendors that provide the equipment. One's an international and one's a Freightliner. Helped meetings with both vendors to go over our specific requirements and ask for bids to be submitted through the purchasing agreement and that is included in your packet this evening. In a practical sense, the way the truck business is these days, both units specify the same motor, both units specify the same transmission, both units specify the same dump bed. So you're really kind of getting what kind of a cab and a badge that you might feel is appropriate and we don't reconceive notions of what is correct with that. Chuck's done the legwork on this, but I am pleased to recommend that the City Commission approve the little bid we received from Freightliner. It is important to note that the big trucks take big times and the delivery would not be expected until after January 1st of next year, but that's the same for both vendors.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Second, Mr. Dedek.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Griswold.
Oh, the question that I had, is this, is this truck going to be built from the ground up?
All of the big trucks, they do basic chassis work and you can specify what engine and what transmission you want. It's fairly common. They make them in groups of like-minded materials.
Yeah, Commissioner, they'll build the chassis and then they'll send the chassis to Henderson to put the bid on it.
Yeah, it's not a vehicle that you can go on a lot and just purchase. There is.
No.
I mean, that's all I wanted to, that's one of the reasons for the time it's going to take to actually get it in the city doing its job, correct?
Yes, sir.
But if you did want to go on a lot to buy one, I'm sure that Mr. McDonald could possibly sell you the used one.
Right, there probably are used ones and you could probably search nationwide and find one that would work, but this way we know we're getting what we need.
Commissioner Dedek.
Okay, thank you.
What's your plan with the used one, with the old one, once we get the new one?
We chose to hold on to them with the expectation to sell them. We believe we would get more money for them and we did not ask for a trade-in value as part of this.
Well, I'm thinking just to keep it as a backup.
Right, and that's been discussed, but it's not been decided.
16K in it last year.
Yeah.
Like to get some of that money back.
Right.
And that truck will hold up between now and January 1st. It's not necessarily.
Oh, yeah, it should. It's got over 200,000. That's why we did this far in advance to try to get it.
Okay.
And there will be a second similar policy report to this early next year as the second truck is funded in 2019.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Now I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the low bid from Kansas City Freightliner sales for the 2020 Freightliner 108 SD Dump Truck at a cost of $124,690.
Second. Motion second to approve the purchase of Freightliner 108 SD. Again, voting for Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Thank you. Next item is consider contract for website redesign.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this was a project spearheaded and run by our Assistant City Manager, so I'll turn it over to him for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The city's website was identified as a priority to replace during last year's budget cycle as our current websites age to the point it's really lacking that functionality and ease of access that residents were looking for. We published RFQ in the Leavenworth Times and on our website on May 23rd and four website vendors submitted successful proposals. Those included Civic Plus, Civic Live, Vision, and Unicode. Staff hosted all four of those onsite for in-person interviews and demonstrations over a two-week period. I've personally contacted all of the references that the companies provided across the country and talking with those cities was extremely valuable in evaluating the proposals. A staff committee of approximately seven different departments from within the city was formed to sit in on those interviews and review the website proposals. We evaluated the proposals on a number of criteria listed in your packet. Just a few of those include the ability to have forms with electronic payments, attractiveness, navigation, ease for staff to edit the website, custom URLs so we're able to send out links a little easier to residents and other people, analytics, security, responsive design, which means you can do it from any device, whether it's mobile, tablet, integration with maps, different photo gallery options and emergency support, just to name a few. The committee provided consensus to move forward with a website from Unicode and that's also the company that's provided municipal code services to the city for over 40 years. They create stunning, useful, and engaging custom websites for municipalities. Of all of the cities that I contacted, their references were just glowing with positive remarks and we felt like we were able to really dive deep in how it works. That design process will be very custom, very in-depth, with lots of opportunity for comment of all of our staff and stakeholders. Kind of a rough timeline in their proposal. It's about four months. It could take a little bit longer. In the coming months, staff's planned that once the design's in the stages where it's to a point it can be presented, we bring that preliminary design to a commission study session for you to review it and see what you guys think, what we come up with. So I'm here for any questions, if you have any. Melissa is also here. She's been very involved with that process as well.
The nice thing about website design is you can look at what they've done and see how easy it is to use others. That was good. Good analysis.
And one of the other exciting pieces with this is it completely integrates with that municipal code so you can search for something in the actual search field. You go to the municipal code and then, oh, I want to search for something else. It'll link back and give you every document that's ever mentioned. So you can look at everything from commission meetings to the code.
That's good.
All in one, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Tedder?
This is Mr. Griswold. I just, it looks like to me a reasonable cost for the first year of implementation and training. Do we have any idea what the, you know, the subsequent, what the cost will be in subsequent years? What would we be paying for in subsequent years? Licensing or?
Yes, sir. The hosting and the total fee for subsequent years is 6,000 a year. So that would be years two and beyond. Right now, we're paying significantly more than that.
So it's a cost avoidance, a cost savings, I guess. Anyway, okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Griswold?
No.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Now I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the services agreement for website design and replacement with municipal code corporation in the amount not to exceed $36,000 for the first year of implementation and training.
I second it.
Motion second to approve the contract for the website design as presented. Begin voting for Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, first consideration. We have four consensus items coming up. First consideration, charter ordinance for transient guest tax.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the August 7th, 2018 City Commission Study Session, the Commission discussed and provided a consensus to move forward with a new charter ordinance related to the transient guest tax. As a quick reminder, this was in response to the Commission's desire to have more clarity and a broader scope of what we could use the transient guest tax for. And as a reminder, transient guest tax is paid by people who stay at hotels in the city of Leavenworth. Those funds are increasing. We used a lot more language with more specificity to guide us in what we could use those funds for. So nothing has changed since the Commission Study Session. If you have any questions, Mr. Waters has reviewed this ordinance and helped draft it and I could entertain anything you may have.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Kramer or Mr. Waters, about the charter ordinance on the transient guest tax? Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Next item, first consideration, ordinance, Uniform Public Defense Code.
Please Chief handle the next three items. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the Police Department is requesting the Commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2018 Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities for use by the city of Leavenworth. Every year, the League of Municipalities produces a uniform public defense codes for cities in Kansas. It's designed to provide a comprehensive public defense ordinance and the city of Leavenworth has used that for many years. It does not take effect until the local governing body adopts it. I've highlighted some changes in the differences between last year and this year. Most of the time, the changes have, are fairly minor. I'd like to highlight just a couple of them that are different this year. The 6.8, they added specifically criminal littering, which outlines several first offense, second offense, third offense with scheduled fines up to somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000. I know that you passed an ordinance for criminal littering in the new municipal code of ordinances and so that remains in effect. You can choose to have that one and not adopt this one or you can choose to adopt this one and then at some point we would dismiss the other one out of the books. It's entirely up to you.
This one has more teeth, though, here, sir.
This one has a scheduled fine that goes a little higher than I think that you passed. The third offense, I think, is $4,000 and so I thought you might take particular interest into that.
Five hundred.
The other one, they created 9.7, a specific issue relating to the abuse of 911. For example, about three weeks ago, we had a gentleman call 911 about 10 or 11 times in a very short period of time complaining that the power was out. And so this is a specific ordinance that helps us deal with that. And unfortunately, we're starting to experience that a little bit more often and so we needed that. And then some other issues, you might note, section 10.27, they addressed an illegal operation of an amusement ride, which probably has some association with the events at Slitter Bond. That's probably where that comes from. I can answer whatever specific questions that you might have, but ask you to place that ordinance on first consideration and move forward.
We, at this point, are, when we vote on this, the next scheduled meeting is that when we remove our current littering one, if we adopted this, or how does that work?
I think Carl and I spoke a little bit before the meeting. That's going to be one thing I think that we need to get together and look at a little bit more. We didn't have quite the time to talk about the littering one and the, there's part of the code provision on air guns and such, that there's a discrepancy on paintball, whether that's included or not. And then there's a little bit of different language in the drug paraphernalia one as well. So there may be a couple of changes back there, but yeah, I think that's what we would plan to do is have whatever it's going to be by the time you have second consideration, pass the final ordinance. That's certainly when we would try to attempt to have the recommendation to either remove one or to keep the city's one. There might be a few language tweaks that Carl and I were able to identify just before this meeting that you may see, you will see changes.
Okay.
For second consideration on this. Nothing, you know, I don't think overly substantive, but I think there's a few language differences and such that haven't been quite worked through.
Okay.
Mr. Waters, since the littering prohibition, would it be advisable for the Commission just to give us a consensus as to whether or not they would like the new language or to keep the old language?
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be appropriate if you'd like. I mean, we can do it, it slides anywhere. You can give us some correction. We can provide a memo, give you options as to either one or if you have an idea right now as to which direction you'd like, we can take that advice.
Okay, we'll handle this, make two separate consensus. One, is there, is there any discussion among Commissioners about replacing our current littering law, which is, that's $500 with this new recommendation, which includes criminal littering, section 6.8, that if we go forward that, we would incorporate the section 6.8 and do away with our current littering law?
Well, I think we should adopt to do one. Now, where we would be in line with the others.
I agree.
So is there a consensus to do that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, is that, now we need a consensus of, do we want to, do we have a consensus to move this forward, the first consideration ordinance on this, Uniform Public Defense Code?
Yes.
We have a consensus to move that one forward. Okay, that covers?
That's fine and between Carl and I and the chief, we can bend, correct all the bright language back to you.
Okay. Chief, next one is standard traffic ordinance.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Again, the Police Department would be requesting the Commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2018 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities. It's very much the same thing, but it's specific to traffic violations that we have in the community. I've highlighted some changes, most of which, in this particular section, every year, they make some change to the DUI language. Either they change the penalty, they go up or down. So those are simple. I would highlight that two particular issues that are new this year. They created a particular ordinance about passing a stationary waste collection vehicle. I think there must have been some issues in the state of Kansas relative to folks maybe hitting a refuse driver or something like that. So they put some ordinance language in there that gives us the ability to tick it if somebody causes too much trouble in that regard. And they've also created a specific, particular ordinance about littering from a motor vehicle, which would be different from the other one in that that has to do with property and this has to do from a car. And so those two allow us to do either one of those violations. The rest of it, again, is fairly minor in regards to the simple language changes and I would be recommending we adopt that.
Based on what I'm seeing here, section 40 dash, 40.1, passing a stationary waste collection vehicle, it's not, it's not against the law to pass one, you just have to be careful. It's not like a passing school bus.
Right, where the school bus and the stop sign is out, you're required to stop or an emergency. It's much like a police car is out, you don't have to stop and you have to give due regard. And so if a particular situation arises in which someone doesn't do that, we can issue a citation based on those facts, where now we don't really have the authority to do that. So again, there must have been some incidents throughout the state that caused the legislature to give that some attention.
Okay. Any other questions or comments in the question? Now we have, oh, I'm sorry.
On section 112-1, what we were talking about before the last one of the littering. The one that we're going to probably send was we were referring to automobiles, were we not?
I think it was considered littering in general, the $500 fine.
Right.
And, you know, obviously mostly probably trying to get the people to throw the dunks back.
We were talking about the trash being checked out of a window.
How does this affect us, Mr. Waters, on this one?
I would look at this particular section, I don't know if the city prosecutor did or not, but I've looked at that, but that's something we should do.
They want to have some time, they can look at all.
Yeah, I've marked that now, that's something.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a lot of good on it.
You have something to say, Chief?
My reading of it is that probably the difference here is that if a passenger is driving in a vehicle, a passenger's riding in a vehicle and throws out littering on the highway, we could cite the driver and the owner of the car. That is what I believe is the difference here. We'll take a look at that to make sure, but that's my reading and that, again, it's brand new. It hadn't been in the standard of ordinance before, but that's what I think the difference is. And so it gives us, both of them give us the authority to take considerable action in the area of littering, whereas before it was a little bit narrower.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other questions, comments, Chief? Now, do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We have moved forward. Next item is, Chiefs again, first consideration, intersection traffic control devices.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm asking you to place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2018 Intersection Traffic Control Device Master Index. Some years back, we went through the city of Leavenworth and identified every single intersection. Our general philosophy is that it should be controlled in some regard, either through a signal or a stop sign. And so we created a master list, which is attached there. And then the- And then each year, we come back before you to ask it to be reauthorized. There have been two significant differences between last year and this year. There are new intersections in the Business Park and there are also new intersections in the Westland subdivision that's currently being developed that we control with some type of signal that need to be included. In addition to that, I'd like to make a note that in about the last seven to 10 days, the city of Leavenworth received a specific request for the intersection of 14th Street and Seneca, which is a T-intersection that is not currently controlled. Some residents there have asked us to consider controlling that intersection, so that's going on right now. That answer will be done by the time we come back in two weeks, so I may add 14th and Seneca to that master list when the decision is ultimately rendered in that regard.
That's right behind Womack.
Behind Womack, right. One of the residents complained that there's been, what, some near traffic accidents there, so we're taking a look at that right now and I may add that between now and two weeks when we come back for final consideration and I'll let that, I'll point that out to you.
Any questions for the chief on this, this item?
No.
If not, we have a consensus moving forward?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a consensus. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item is consent agenda.
Yes, that's me. This is the first claim slash expenditure report for the month of August, for this particular month, so the only thing I'll highlight again is something that's always there on this first monthly report of the month is our, the city's payment to, for the healthcare insurance for the employees of the city to United Healthcare Insurance Company. There were some claims and expenditures to construction companies, primarily, I believe, for the work that's been going on on our roads. So with that, I move that we approve claims for July 21st, 2018 through August 3rd, 2018 in the amount of $2,633,862 and 20 cents. Net amount for pay, number 16, effective August 3rd, 2018, in the amount of $338,157 and 51 cents. No police and fire pension.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Discussion among Commissioners, Commissioner Griswold, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Bowder?
Hope kids are getting back to school, so drive carefully.
Say that, school starts, I believe, on Thursday, please be, tomorrow, Wednesday, I'm sorry. I don't have any kids in school, no. And please be careful in the school zones, you know, a lot of kids that might be their first year, walking to school by themselves, jumping across the street, please be careful. We haven't had a tragedy and we certainly don't want one. Before we close, I have a budget document that I need the governing body to sign, so let's, I just need, it's okay that you're not signing, Commissioner Griswold, so I just need this, let's do this while we're in session, so we don't violate anything, so everyone just sign.
One of you.
Yeah, I just, where is that?
Yes, any of those lines, they never had the signings.
We're signing the publication of the budget, is that correct?
It's the budget certification.
Budget certification. Mr. Kramer, any comments? Mr. Waters?
No, sir.
Ms. Williamson?
Nothing.
If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.